Good evening all, and thank you for coming out on this beautiful spring night. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the roll, please.
Schmuckel.
Here.
Bar chef.
Here.
Augustineelli.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
And Corn.
Here. And let the record show that Steve is absent and excused. First item on my agenda is public comment. If there's any member of the public who would care to address the board at this time, please come to the podium, speak into the mic, and if you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address. I'm thinking we can close public comment, come back to the board for review and approval of the agenda and statements of conflicts of interest.
I don't know if it's conflict, but I have a conflict of interest or not.
Have a comment?
Pardon?
Yes. Well, I guess you might, you have to state maybe why you...
Conflict of interest because of the unfinished business 7A, resolution to resurface my road.
So I'd just like to read something really quick. A conflict of interest is any interest competing with or adverse to our primary duty of loyalty to the public interest. A competing interest may be a personal interest, or it may be a duty or loyalty we owe to a third party. In either case, there is a conflict if the competing interest impairs our ability to decide a public question objectively and independently. I kind of feel like with the issue that we've been dealing with her area and her concern with a conflict is, I could see if she set out to recruit all of her neighbors to do this because, A, she wanted to inflate her property values and it was something driven by her, but she just happened to be a resource for her neighbors and she just happens to be on this board. So I feel like, and it's up to you to decide if you could be objective in making your decision that it's to benefit the residents and it isn't for you. In my opinion, what I've seen is not that you sought this out for your own interests. So I don't personally feel that there's a conflict. That's only my opinion.
And according to the law governing townships, if it's not a unanimous feeling by the board that there's a conflict, there is no conflict. So you're okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therewith and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have the minutes of February 13th, 2024, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $407.19, recommend approval. And Gordy Frazier Developers Escrow Fund, stormwater reviews, utility plan reviews, oversight, and closeout, $8,563.50. General Utilities, $6,176.20. Park Funds, DNR Trust Fund, $3,500, for a total of $18,239.70. MTT update, receive and file, and consideration of Resolution 2024-04-T to recommend approval for a new resort Class C and SDM license for Travers Fairfield Beer and Wine LLC, recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Denise?
The minutes, please.
All right. Anyone else on the board who would like to remove anything?
I'd like to move D.
Anything else? All right. Is there any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Pardon?
They're all settled now.
Okay. Our staff. Is there anything you'd want to remove, John? Then a motion to approve with the exception of items A and D.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of items A and D.
Support.
Any questions or comments? We have a roll call vote, please.
Bar chef.
Yes.
Augustineelli.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes. And Ms. Schmuckel, item A.
Yeah, you said that Steve wasn't coming. He had texted me earlier this afternoon and he said he read the minutes and there was a mistake in it. Can I say something about that mistake? Because I remember him saying it. It was just when he had declared a possible conflict of interest with the township manager, he said, "and supervisor," and that wasn't put in here. And the supervisor position. I don't know, I'm just asking.
I mean, we typically don't do word for word for minutes, but...
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the minutes as presented. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Onward to item D.
Okay, we're just confirming that this doesn't take away from any of our licenses. This is a beer and wine and that it's just recreational, just for that facility.
Correct.
I just want to confirm that before we approved it with everybody.
There's a copy of the application and a copy that references the act, segment four, and then I've got that circled for you on the next page to show you what that is. And it is specifically...
For recreational?
Correct.
For the resort license. Okay.
And one thing that has come up in the past too is sometimes these hotels feel like they could prohibit non-guests from drinking in their bars, but that's not the case because these are public licenses. So if somebody should happen to want to just go there and get a drink, they would have to technically allow them, even if they weren't a guest.
Correct. John?
Is this related to the Fairfield Inn that's under construction? I do know that for both of those hotels, the True Hotel Inn for Fairfield, there's a condition of that approval that there's no restaurant permitted in those that's open to the public. So I know this is intended to be for, primarily for occupants of those hotels, but it's just one of those things where it was based on the site constraints on that in terms of parking and so forth. It was never envisioned that there would be any type of restaurant or anything of that type of operation. Not that this is necessarily what's being proposed, but I just want to declare that that was part of the approvals that the planning commission granted on those.
So if we grant this permit, then...
Then they can serve alcohol to their guests and under state law, they cannot refuse anybody, but under the terms of their zoning approval, they can't have people from outside.
So how does that work?
Well, I think, I guess it's one of those things where they wouldn't necessarily advertise as a restaurant or bar outside. So there would be no additional signage or anything like that that would say that they have this bar that's open to the public, that type of thing. So it's one of those things that it's not intended to, while it doesn't preclude people coming in off the street and having a drink, it's really intended to be primarily for the guests that are in those hotels. And so as long as it's not conveyed as it's advertised and promoted and signage and other types of things, so.
We're not encouraging people to drive over there and drink.
Into my former job, when I did these investigations for establishments, this has never been an issue. Most people don't even know that rule.
Right.
You know, if they're going to drink, it's because they're staying at the hotel.
Mm-hmm.
That's typically how it works, so.
Okay.
So you don't have to be a Sam's Club member to go in and buy liquor.
Correct.
And interestingly enough, liquor stores can carry Sam's Club liquor and Costco liquor and sell it to the general public. I just found that out recently.
Oh, wow.
Outstanding.
Interesting.
Have you heard good things about their French vodka?
Yeah. Okay, I'll make the motion that we adopt item number D, which is a Resolution 2024-04-T recommending approval for a new resort Class C and SMD licenses for Travers Fairfield Beer and Wine LLC. Support.
We have a motion and support. I think it was by Laney. The tie goes to... Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Augustineelli?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes. That concludes the consent calendar, and we will move on to correspondence. Nothing more exciting. Reports. Item A, construction report.
Well, good evening. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. In your packet dated February 14th is our report and high-level overview. Cedar Run Booster is probably the one I am feverishly working on to get out for bid in the next couple of months. Just working out a lot of specifics, electrical, DPW, things like that that, you know, they like to see. McCray PRV, they have, you know, that was one of the cluster of PRVs that we had originally put out for bid. DPW has advised me that is not a priority, however, the Stone Ridge PRV is, and that's later on in your agenda. That project was put out for bid, so there's a letter from Gordy Frazier to that effect, so I won't get into details on that. Same with the Silver Lake Sewer Extension to Francisco's, that's also in your board packet, we'll talk about later. Finding Time, I know we talked about the Olsons and the southern extension and the Water Main Booster Station. I still need to, hopefully next month, get on your agenda a contract for the booster station design and work through them. Just other priorities with some Garfield Township projects have dictated. Parks and Rec, I'm happy to report River East is out for bids, and I appreciate all the staff's help with that. Derek and Sean have been wonderful and great to work with. You guys are very lucky to have them, and I know you guys already know that, that goes without being said. But no, they have been very diligent, helping me, giving me, you know, feedback and input, same with John and Steve. So yeah, March 5th will be the bid opening for that that we'll hold here, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Lot of utility plan reviews. What winter we did have didn't really stop anything, so I was not able to do much catch-up. We actually had most of our inspectors still fully, gainfully employed and not laid off with utility inspections. So with that being said, we've been diligently following up with a lot of these developments to get closeout paperwork so we can now turn over these utilities. So Wendy Hills is one that we've reviewed a fourth and fifth time, so I hope we'll get a revised set soon from them to submit for permits. That's their second phase. However, Beta Ridge is at 45. The two Britton Developments and the two Burmley Hills and Meadows are in the final closeout stages, and I'm hopeful we can get that to you guys next month to get those utilities turned over and accepted. Village at Garfield, they submitted revised plans and everything was in order, so we're going to get those submitted for permit. I'll just need your signature soon. Otherwise, just a couple stormwater reviews have come through. Those, knock on wood, have been a little quieter, so. But I will take any comments. Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry.
I had time. All rules. The bathrooms at River East.
Yeah.
What is the, is it the March 5th bid, or is that something that, are they going to be, I heard they're not going to be ready until January.
So we, yes, so when we first worked on this exercise just for bathrooms, it was decided through staff that we wanted year-round bathrooms available. And there are vendors that do that and build prefabricated bathrooms. We exclusively worked with one manufacturer, however, there are other approved equals. The one manufacturer we worked through originally indicated that they were about four months out. However, there has been a lot of interest in prefab bathrooms just because of cost, as you guys can appreciate, as opposed to building them on-site. So they're overwhelmed, that specific manufacturer, and they're indicating they're about a year out. However, I am currently bidding out a similar bathroom, and there are or equal vendors, I just found out, that build the similar style, and they can meet our time constraints.
Okay.
So that's exciting, but I do, as far as staff's concerned, talking with Derek, he was just kind of researching, you know, just comparative costs from direction from the supervisor, what if we were to hire a contractor to build it all in place, just so that you guys could see the big price between the two. I don't think he's gotten anything yet. Chuck, are you aware?
No, he's got, he had one, he talked to, I know for certain, one person who's interested in doing it, but he hasn't gotten a bid.
Right, yeah. Because my fear in the decision was there's going to be quite exponential difference in price of prefabbed versus built on-site. But with that being said, you know, there's two ways we could go. We could continue down that route and wait for a bathroom, have everything built, assuming we go with the one vendor, but I am hearing there is another or equal manufacturer that builds prefabricated out of Wisconsin that can provide a quicker delivery time.
There's a guy in Traverse City who does that, too.
Is there really?
Britton.
Oh, well, yeah.
No, he does. He has, you know...
The concrete ones?
No, the metal ones, like the container types.
For year-round?
Yeah, they have heaters that work.
Okay. So if that's, if we want to change aesthetics, but I mean, we, like I said, we have a March 5th deadline, so I think we probably need to, once Derek collects some more information, we're going to regroup and decide, do we issue an alternate bid? Maybe we, you know, hold off on the bathroom, maybe we forge ahead. So we'll have some decisions to make, but, you know, they're good ones.
Yeah, I think we need to get one in there sooner than later so that people will utilize the park more. That's an essential.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's like anything, for a while it was windows, fences last year with River East. We were a year out for fencing.
Garage doors.
Right, I know. It's always, it's random things. And I would not have expected prefabricated bathrooms, but at the moment, they are. This specific manufacturer, anyway. So we're researching some other ones, so. But I can look into the Britton one if you guys want to entertain a steel enclosure. We'll have a discussion with staff to talk about it and aesthetics, so.
Very good.
Okay.
I just have a comment on that, and I know that being on the Parks and Rec Commission, that was one of our main concerns is to get that bathroom, because if the park's going to be open, the dog park's going to be open.
Right.
We need that bathroom.
Yeah. No, I know. No. It was disappointing to hear that, because like I said, three, four months ago, they were under a different, that specific vendor was under a different timeline, and they've experienced some labor and just a lot of requests for bathrooms, so.
Yeah, we're all in agreement.
Yep. So is there something, I mean, if it's a while that we could do, I don't really like outhouses, but do the portable...
That was something that Derek had thrown out, too, is you can get those...
Just for a short period of time, do we get good ones?
Yeah, and they call them, you know, pretty potties, you know, you can get...
Oh, has the bathroom with the...
Yeah.
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 Pretty potty.
They have a two-door model?
They do. They make, I mean, you can get these portable ones, yeah.
I've seen those. If you wash your hands, the whole thing.
Yeah, they'll even come on a trailer, and they, seriously, they're called pretty potties, and they're okay. They work.
They're better than an outhouse.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, absolutely, so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our MMR report, and unfortunately due to a family issue, Amy won't be here tonight. The county commissioners, one of them is West, and the other one texted me and said that they haven't really had any meetings or anything to report, so.
From one week ago, yeah.
She's taken a night off from a week ago, which brings us up to the Grand Traverse County Road Commission report.
And there's nobody here.
There we go. So we'll just move right along to the supervisors' report. In the last...
Week.
Week. I did attend a meeting at the Grand Traverse County Road Commission with, I think, almost every supervisor in the county. We might have been missing one to talk about road projects and special assessment districts and some of the issues we've had in the past. And I think there's a very dramatic difference in the attitude of the road commission. They return calls immediately. They're kind of trying to make up for some lost time, and...
That's good.
It was a good meeting. I'm impressed with the crew they put together. Also met with the TTCI Technical Committee. The chairman is quite an impressive man. It's our planner, John Syke.
He is impressive.
We did adopt some policies for projects and how we'll pick projects going forward. It was an interesting discussion. Today went to the Grand Traverse Economic Development Group, or I think Traverse Connect was there, the county was there, and five of the township supervisors to talk about how we see economic development coming in the future. It seems like there's a lot of wheels spinning going on, and so it's, again, I think it's, we're going to meet once a month for the next few months and see if we can get some, some kind of traction where we're... But it was, it was a good session, so. And then I have this board I met with. Oh, that was a week ago. That was you guys. Any questions?
We were here a week ago.
Yes, we were. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. 7A is a public hearing for consideration of Resolution 2024-01TC to approve tentative Ridgeview Court resurfacing special assessment role. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, ma'am.
The letter that you received in your packet from Doris, unfortunately Doris passed away last week, so that letter's kind of like null and void now. Yeah, she passed away last week.
All right, and at this point, we will open the public hearing, and anyone who would like to speak to the resolution to establish the district, please come to the podium. Yes, ma'am, you can speak.
No, you're not establishing a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm like...
Tentative Ridgeview.
Yeah, assessment. We're going to establish the assessment role. Thank you. Next time, come to the microphone. Okay, we will bring it back to the board. We'll close the public hearing at this point and bring it back to the board for consideration. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we approve Resolution 2024-1-T subsection C, a tentative special assessment role for Ridgeview Court resurfacing special assessment district.
Support.
We have a motion and support to establish special assessment role as presented by Ridgeview Court. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Just a quick comment. I know that there was a lot of conversation the last time we dealt with this, and some people had concerns, and based on no further conversations, my assumption is that everybody is wanting this to move forward.
Yep. Want to comment on that also?
We met with the residents here and had a, just a little informal session.
Informal session.
We had somebody from the road commission, Amy was here, myself, and we just answered every question, and I think everybody was comfortable.
Perfect. Good.
I did receive a text from one of our neighbors, Pat Captain. She wasn't able to make it, but she said she's full on board with it. So, and she was at the meeting with us, too, so.
So, would anyone care to make a motion?
She already did.
He already did?
Oh, who did?
Chris.
Oh, and then you had to make a comment after that?
I second it.
You allowed me to make a comment.
Right. Any other questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, okay. And Corn?
You can't.
You can't. You have to vote.
Okay, I'm going to vote yes.
Okay.
As long as, I mean...
And I'll make it unanimous. Motion passes.
All done.
Right, unfinished item B.
Now it's up to her.
Thank you.
Vegas, have a good night.
Discussion to changes in the township's administrative structure. And...
Is this question, is this for the manager, or is this for Carl's position?
This is for, let's go with Carl's position on this one, shall we? I don't, it isn't quite clear.
Yeah, that's what I was, okay. And is this the one that we were talking about getting the, yeah, getting the...
We have three potential...
What are they, what are they called?
Bits.
Or...
For...
Out of construction.
No, 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 no. What are these called?
They're called search firms.
Thank you.
Recruiting firms.
Thank you.
Recruiting firms. And we have, just to refresh people's memory, Amy Sell recently did the Metro Fire Chief search for us, did a very thorough job. She also did the city manager position. Double Hall Solutions is Nate Geinzer's group. He's, who is the temporary city manager, who I worked with, and he's, I thought, he's a rock-solid kind of guy. I liked the way he did things, and when he told the city commission that their aspirations and their budget were not in alignment, I like the way he talks. And the third one is from Chet Janik, and Chet's got a tremendous amount of experience. He's done a lot of this kind of work. Most of his work has been in the educational field, hiring with superintendents, but recently he's done a lot of work in terms of municipalities. I think they're all three good choices. I think Amy Sell offered us their basic package. I gave you an explanation of what the packages she offers are, and I think it's up to the board. I think any one of them would be a good choice, but it's up to the board on which one you want to go with. Molly?
So let's talk about costs. I guess for me, it's two things, duration, we have time, right, so the amount of time, but then the cost, she put us in as a base cost, right, at like 4... At like $4,000. And then we have one at $8,000. And we have one at $6,700.
Right.
Do we think that Amy can do this project in that 4,000 range? Or?
Is it gonna cost more money?
Is it gonna be?
Her explanation is that this is her basic, oops, so she will do exactly what she's listed here. As the basic package.
Yeah.
So it's a it's kind of a no frills thing. It's, she will do the best she can to get as many qualified applicants as she can. She doesn't anticipate a lot of appearances in front of the board or it being a public, you know, any kind of a public involvement session. Just straight up recruitment and recommendations.
But she would find qualified applicants?
Yes.
And she would bring those applicants to the board?
Yes. And then see, the other two would use a little more of the traditional approach where they speak with the board and try to get more of a feel of how the board, what kind of a person the board's looking for in terms of temperament, personality, abilities. So I know this is a very special spot for us. So that's where I'm giving.
I like the idea of the others coming to the board and finding out what the board wants and rather than a basic one. You know, I really like to see someone more involved with I don't know, do they talk to the employees also and, or do they, you know?
They have.
Cause like, yeah, the stakeholders in us because like with Amy, it doesn't sound like she's just gonna do the basic, I just wanna say this, I know it's not right, put a help wanted, had to look at them and tell us who she thinks.
Right.
Where I think the Michigan Leadership Institute and the Double Hall are getting more involved. And I think as the township, we have such a great working facility here and great working people that I would like to see somebody that gets more involved in the board level and then other levels rather than just the basics.
Yeah. And then she offers that, she does offer a level two, which starts at 9,500, where you get up to 10 stakeholder alignment interviews, reference checks, background checks, video interview platform, but for an extra fee.
Yeah.
Placement guarantee none. So it's a little more substantial, but in that particular case, I think either the other two are probably a better purchase.
Right. Right. I agree. I like Michigan Leadership Institute. I really do. After reading, I mean, you sent me these and I spent the afternoon reading. And your reading, you didn't spell that right in your email, by the way, I want to tell you.
Laney?
You noticed me down here finally. So if the person we're gonna go with looking for Carl's position, is this the same person we're going to try to go, our company or organization we're going to have get involved with the manager position?
I think they would have a leg up on their competition. I mean, if they do a good job and we're happy with them.
I really believe we need to get moving on that right away if this is something we're going to do because that April 23rd deadline is coming quickly.
Yep, I agree. But again, I think that would be.
But these costs are just for the supervisor, I mean.
Just for the building official.
Just for the building. So that would be more money. So that would have to come back at another meeting, right?
Yeah, that would be a whole other level. Chris?
I don't think, we know what Amy Sell provides. We've used her before at Metro did. I kind of feel like it gives us an opportunity to test somebody else out. So we have other comparisons for future needs. I was more inclined to support Michigan Leadership Institute, but based on what she just said, I kind of felt and what I've heard is that Double Hall may be better for an administrative level employee like a manager. So if you want to, if we do decide to go change our structure to a manager, it's, you know, the recommend, suggestions to me was use, you know, Double Hall Solutions. So this would give you an opportunity to test drive his product prior to that and to see if you
Yeah.
even though it's more money.
Okay. And then back to you.
I have a question, though. I mean, were these entities asked or told that we may be using them again?
No.
I don't know.
Would that be a difference in this?
In terms of how they price it?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay. That's just the question I have. Okay.
I think, you know, Michigan Leadership Institute is, their rep is local. He's currently working in the city as the assistant manager. And he's done work for neighboring counties and communities and so it's a, for them, it's less travel, more, more hands-on time. That's probably why it's a little less than Double Hall. But I was impressed with me working with him as the city manager. So I enjoyed that. I guess I'd like to hear what the rest of the crew has to say. Hello, Chloe.
Hi. It seems like the board kind of wants more of a, you know, detailed experience. So I'd probably go with Michigan Leadership Institute just because they're local and they seem like they can get us that more of an experience. But honestly, my first thought was like for a position like Carl's, I would just do the basic package with Amy Sell, because that's just my, I just thought, you know, it's an important position. That's why we're hiring a consultant, but I don't think we need to spend a ton of money on that. Whereas like the manager position, to me, I'd want, I'd want more of that experience with the manager position that, because they're gonna be overseeing all of our staff. So to me, like Carl's job, I think we could get a good candidate with Amy Sell for the lower price, but if that's not the direction the board wants to go, I'm fine with, I'm fine with, I guess Michigan Leadership Institute seems which the one I would pick between the last two, but.
Laney, have any thinking?
No, I had that one question whether, what we were gonna do, if this was the people we were gonna go with, with the manager, because I really think our next meeting, we need to come up with, we need to do that. I mean, we need to move forward with that. I kind of agree with Amy, with Amy, I'm sorry, Chloe, with Chloe regarding Amy Sell that we probably could get what we needed with the lower price for Carl's position. He is the building official. He's in that one department.
That makes sense. That makes sense, too.
But we want to try these other ones out to see how they would do with the manager position. So what do you do? I don't know. But, yeah.
Molly?
Yeah, I think maybe the middle of the road is the Michigan Leadership Institute. They're local. If they work out Gold Star, we might still consider them for the other. And if not, then we'll move on to the other. But this does give us a chance to try that out. I could go with them, too.
Yeah. I say there.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would make a motion that we use Michigan Leadership Institute for the job search for building inspector.
Yeah, motion and double-barreled support.
Coast to Molly.
Coast to Molly.
Any questions or comments? Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Marcheff?
Us.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Okay. We do have I think we have some information, additional information on to have disappeared. Oh. There's some additional information on the role of statutory roles of the manager and the supervisor.
Oh, you saw that.
Two sides. So I think that basically I can give you a list of about 150 things that I do, but.
Have you made that list, Chet?
I don't know that that's, it's about me is more than it is about what the positions are.
I understand that, but I would like to see what you would give off to the manager that you're doing, you're currently doing now.
Okay.
What you are currently doing now, and I think that's gonna make a big decision whether or not the supervisor's gonna be a full-time position or a part-time position, when I see, I see it in writing, like I attend 72 meetings, but my manager can attend 60 of them rather than me.
Yeah, I understand what you're asking for.
Yes, please.
You don't want to know everything I do every day.
No.
That's good.
I do.
You already know.
Too much.
You got the tracker in my car.
I'm just saying that that would help us out because Chloe and Laney are with you all the time and as the trustees, we don't know exactly.
All right. All right, I will. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Molly.
Yeah, a comment then. So well, you could probably bypass some of that. If you, if this is what you think that a township supervisor ought to do, and we've got our bullet points of what the township supervisor ought to do. And do you have things to add to that, that a supervisor ought to do? And then on the back, you know, you have, I don't, I don't know if we do a superintendent or a manager. I'm not sure how you, how, which way we would do that, but.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a tremendous amount of difference because it appears that you can customize either position.
Whichever way you want. But it might be, okay, if you look at this list of statutory duties of a supervisor, are there other things that you think would be beneficial to the township to have included in that as the supervisor's role? Everything else is gonna go to the manager.
Yeah. And I think the division is going to come down to, at the end of the day, whether the role is more political in nature or managerial. You know, so I think.
Right.
I can do that. I'll, I'll chop it up and.
That would help. I would appreciate that. I would appreciate that.
I think this is a good list, though. This is what we have to do by law.
Right.
That's the statutory duties right here.
Yep.
Right. But there's more that he does than that, of course. That's what I want to know of the other things that not on this list that you do that would go to the manager.
Yep. All right. What? I'm sorry, Chloe.
I was just gonna say this, little excerpts from the little red book, but when I talked to, oh, a long time ago, when we very first discussed this, he's a treasurer at Comstock Township. He said that basically the, he sent me the law and everything. And so when you have a superintendent, from what I understand, they would take on all of these duties, A through O statutory. But if you have a manager, is when you can pick and choose which ones. I'm not sure if you found out something different than that, but I think generally you either do a superintendent, give them all those duties, and that's when the supervisor becomes more of a political figure where they're doing the other items on here. And then the manager's doing all of the A through O. So you can kind of break it up. If, I don't know, I kind of envision if we're making supervisor part-time, they're not gonna be doing the A through O on the back. That's the manager.
Correct.
And then the supervisor, but we can customize it however we want, basically, if you do a manager. Is that how you understand it, Chuck? Manager, you could pick and choose any of the duties that you want?
Correct. And, and I think it's that way with the supervisor as well, but I may be mistaken, but that was the overall impression I got.
Yeah.
The supervisor would still be the chief legal officer. They're gonna be the person named in lawsuits or filing lawsuits. They would, of course, be the chairman of the board. They would work with the manager to prepare the agenda. They would still be the head of assessing. So it would be the supervisor's role to work with our assessor on tax appeals and settlements and that sort of thing. So it's a yeah, it's a, I, I like the, I don't see people using the word superintendent very often. Almost everybody as manager. Yep.
It says in Charter Townships, performs duties in MCL 42-10.
Yes, yes, yes.
What is that?
That is.
That's this.
It's.
Is that this?
Yeah.
Those are the duties.
4210.
Of a superintendent. Well, they're the duties of a township supervisor, but you can delegate them to a superintendent.
Okay, that's, so that's what I'm kind of a little confused about because if we go to a manager and not a superintendent, then this would not really apply.
I mean, they still would have to be done by somebody.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply under MCL 4210 if we do it as a manager's position. Rather than a superintendent.
Yeah.
I guess I'm asking.
Well, so these are the, the supervisor's duty unless they're appointed to a superintendent. And I'm, I'm assuming you can appoint them to a manager, too.
Okay.
I think the names are used interchangeably.
That's not gonna be, you know, if it's manager and not super, because this is saying one specific thing as a superintendent, and we're gonna be doing manager.
Yeah, I will pose that question again to MTA's attorney.
Please.
But she.
That would, yeah, because I would.
The difference between supervisor and superintendent, yeah.
Yeah. According to this, we have to go by the MCL 4210, which is on a superintendent. Can we do it the same way as a manager, is I guess my question is, rather than a superintendent?
I believe that in either case, the board has flexibility.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure, you know, so.
But I will get that confirmed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Just a quick comment. You know, this is a pretty big decision that we're making.
Right.
And when we make the decision and people are gonna come to us and say, well, why did you do that? We can't just say because Chuck Corn feels like we should. Or we can say that Chuck Corn feels like we should because of X, Y, and Z. I feel like, you know, to your point, Denise, about having a list of things that you feel should be a manager's job or your job, and then having a reason why you want to split them up. Like, for instance, you're spread thin, running all over the place, trying to do the best you can, or only able to do good at everything. But by putting a manager in place, it allows us to be great in all aspects. For instance, like the manager can focus on economic development where you may not be able to. Thus, that helps us generate revenue for the township, which puts us in a better position, allows us to reduce taxes. So what, what are the rationale behind the change and where do we benefit as a township and ultimately like the taxpayers benefit greater than our current system? I kind of want like that picture so I can be comfortable with a decision.
Yeah. And I think the primary reason is that the township has grown and that there is, there's more going on. There's a, a very I don't, I obviously don't have a degree or a master's degree in public administration, but there are people out there who do. And it's a, it is a skill set that, you know, will help us, as you said, in running our operation more efficiently. That's kind of always been my goal, is to try to make it as efficient as possible. I think we've done all right.
On that note, too, Chris, I think one of the main things is, is the growth. You know, I mean, it is the growth. It's just getting so large in that way that our supervisor can go on more vacations.
And I agree, like for instance.
And I agree, like for instance, at our Metro meeting today, we look at a heat map for calls for service.
Right.
Okay, so it impacts a certain area of the township and, you know, manager has the time to look at it and maybe work with the fire department and try to, you know, reduce the calls. What can we do different from a township and maybe working with John? You know, you, you drive up La Frayne, that place has exploded. And, you know, I often think, do we have enough resources to meet the needs, whether it's fire, you know, MMR or police?
I don't think we are.
So I, I'm kind of answering my own question. These are all the reasons where I could see the need where a manager, rather than going to 50,000 meetings, actually could sit down.
Right.
And get things done.
I agree. I agree 100%. Whereas you would still be going to like metro meetings or things like that.
Yep.
But he would be managing, like you said, the things with the, he or she, I shouldn't say he.
Yep.
They.
That person.
That person would be managing the other things that you, that takes a lot of your time, which you don't have enough of. I mean, how many years ago when we started this, was it?
15 and a half.
15 years ago, it wasn't like this.
No.
It was not like this.
Molly?
Well, there's also the issue of the fact that it's a political position. So it can become a popularity contest in the township. And I think just for everybody's feeling in the township, since we're getting so big, having a manager that would keep a steady handle on things, no matter who's elected, is beneficial to the township.
That's, that is my feeling. It would be advantageous to the township. I think that, you know, it would be slightly higher cost than a supervisor to have both. But I think it would be much better results. Sometimes it just, like this, this last week has been very interesting because I was trying to get a lot done in a week, you know, between meetings.
You didn't have that two-week gap there.
Yeah, I like those three-week gaps.
Well, you have a three-week gap for the next one now, so you can get your list together.
Feel much better. But I'm, I think it's, I think it makes sense. I, I would be, if I knew for certain who the next supervisor was going to be, you know, I'd be, I could be very comfortable. But I don't know. You know, it could be.
And you never will.
Right. As long as it's an elected position, it's just the person who got one more vote than the other.
And the thing that I like the most about the township manager is it reporting to us because of the fact that, let's just say you ran again and you got ousted and somebody else came in, they can't get rid of that township manager. And that township manager already knows and runs this place and.
Works for the board.
I think that's the best cushion that we have for this township. I really, really do. Because if somebody ran against Laney and she lost, I mean, they could come in and say, Betty, we don't want you anymore. You know, I mean, and that's why with a deputy supervisor, that would happen. And with a manager, that's not going to happen.
Correct.
I yank it.
Mr. Barshew.
What do you envision as far as this process coming to a conclusion? Just us continuing conversation?
I think we, the idea would be to draft an ordinance, which basically establishes the position and makes it official. And at that point, we can start to move aggressively for trying to find the right person. And we can let anybody who's considering being supervisor that know that what that position will be, what the job description is and what the pay would be. Because that is just fair to somebody who's considering running for office.
Would that be whether we're going to be at full-time or part-time? And when would that decision be made?
It would all be in that ordinance when we, we could, we could make it at our next meeting.
All right, I have a question on that then.
Yep.
Let's say I agree 100% with the manager, okay? But you're going to put in the ordinance that the supervisor is going to become part-time.
Right.
If I don't want that supervisor to be part-time, I'm going to vote against a manager then.
Which supervisor don't you want part-time?
The supervisor.
The elected one?
The elected supervisor.
Yeah.
If I don't like the fact that the elected supervisor is going to be part-time, then I'm going to vote against a manager because I don't like the way that it's written.
There might be some supervisors you want for part-time.
No, I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Laney?
So quite frankly, I can't see paying a manager that's going to be doing the majority of the supervisor's duties and having a full-time supervisor and paying a full-time supervisor. I think that is not being fiscally responsible to our voters. I think that if you're going to put a manager in position and pay the manager what they should be paid, and they are going to be doing the supervisor's duties that the supervisor was, is being paid for now, I don't see how we could answer to our voters and say, we're still going to pay somebody this amount of money as a full, as a part-time supervisor or a full-time supervisor who somebody else is doing all their duties. I think that that would just be not fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. It is, that, that is not, I think if you're going to have a full-time supervisor, then they should do all their duties. If you're going to have a, a full-time manager, you should have a part-time supervisor and pay them, you know, whatever we, whatever is decided to pay them. But, but having two full-time people like that to do one person's job isn't fiscally responsible. That's my opinion.
I agree with that. And the research that I found showed that most were set up, you know, with the wage equaling the job duties. And when there was a manager, the supervisor was making like a third, roughly. So you would assume they're, they're getting paid less because they're doing a third of the work. So I, I agree with your comment. I feel like if you do go this route, in the end, we all agree that that's fiscally responsible and that's how you should structure it. And then who knows, maybe as you go down the road, you figure that, hey, the supervisor needs to be full-time now. Doesn't mean it can't change, right?
Only if their duties go up.
Correct, yeah. If the, if the township gets even busier and that the demand is greater, then that can change then.
Did you, did you find any, any townships that were out there that have a manager that's, and a supervisor that are paid the same?
No, and I think the highest paid supervisor, and again, refer to that spreadsheet that I put together, it seemed to be like the, the manager and the supervisor made the most was like $50,000. So, and then you'd find a lot of them at about $15,000, $20,000, you know, roughly less than a quarter of what the manager was making in most cases.
Well, it'll depend on the duties.
Right. I think it would make sense for, I think we have a limited amount of office space. I think we need to have one office really available. And I think the supervisor would be like a mayor who would not have an office in the building, but would be, you know, would obviously spend time there with the manager, the assessor. Obviously, the township attorney would still be part of his involvement.
And they would be the face of the township.
Correct.
The supervisor would be the face of the township, so.
To, to the world, to the world outside.
All the, all of those other social things that a supervisor can be beneficial to the township on.
Yep.
That would be the supervisor's, yeah.
Co.
So I think we kind of all agree that we like the manager idea. I'd rather kind of make a decision on it sooner than later, just for people who are, you know, waiting on this decision to be made. But also I was thinking, so you said that you're going to produce an ordinance establishing the manager role. Would that have their benefits and salary in it as well, or is that something you would do at a different time?
That would be, by resolution, the board would do that.
Okay.
Same way we.
Because I would still like to urge us to consult an outside party on that, the, for the compensation and the benefits, just because we're so intimately involved with these roles and the people who may be wanting them. So I was just hoping that we could establish this hopefully before the deadline or soon before the deadline even. We could establish the manager and part-time supervisor. Could we set the supervisor's salary, I guess, before we set the manager's salary? Because that might take more time. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
I think so. I think we can set.
Because we need to get the supervisor's salary set before the, yeah.
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 So people who are considering the position would know.
Right. Yeah, so I feel like we need to get working on that. And I don't like pushing things back to the next meeting. I don't know, I feel like we all kind of agree that we need a manager. I don't know.
I agree.
I, I'm with you, Chloe. I think that when I was asking about who we were looking at for Carl's job, could we also make a motion if we could ask them about this other position as well and what they recommend as compensation or, or move that along?
Yeah.
Along with this?
Yep.
Can we, when we make our board motion, or we already made the motion for the leadership to, to hire them, can we amend it to say and also include asking about this other position or what do we need to do?
I think that's just a conversation I can have with them.
Okay.
And if they're, if there's going to be fees involved.
He can get back to us.
Bring it back to the board.
It depends on the amount of the fees. I mean, if they're minor, then.
Yeah.
I think it's within, a certain amount is within my discretion.
$5,000.
Okay. $5,000? I was thinking maybe a little less than that, but.
Yeah, the, so the ordinance, do you think you're going to bring before the board next meeting or?
I think I would like to bring an ordinance before.
And who would write that? Is it going to be?
I would.
John? Or are we just going to sample on?
There are ordinances out there already, so we can, we can.
Poor John sitting over there.
We could beg Maro and steel.
Just to be clear, that just establishes creating the position of manager, and then we would vote on that at our next meeting.
Correct.
And I guess, does anyone need any more information before we make a decision on this? Because it seems, it is a big decision.
I do.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like a little bit more information. Part of it is, can I ask you four?
Yep.
And the other, I'm, I'm all for a manager. I mean, there's no if, stands, buts about it. But is there any way we could separate that resolution about the manager and the supervisor? Because we might not have all the information that we need. I mean, I know I want.
I will. The resolution can have my recommendations in it or the, the ordinance.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the board wants to take the red ink out and change things, they can do that.
Because what I'm looking at is whether we have a cost. You know, I don't, are we going to have a cost by that time you have that resolution of what the manager is going to make?
No.
That's what I, that would go.
Yeah.
We're just basically going on the manager's position. That's why I'm, I'm just, that's why I wanted that list from you, just put apples and oranges, okay? How much they're going to be doing most of your job, basically. And then where we're going to go with the supervisor, if it's going to be part-time, what that salary is going to be. You know, those are the questions I'm still having in my mind.
Yeah, and in, in my mind, I see the supervisor's position for this township probably somewhere in the $30,000 to $35,000 range.
Is that going to include benefits?
No. And then the manager, on the other hand, it was, is, I think you're going to have to look at a range.
Right.
Something like that. And it may be 90 to 120.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
I think it's going to have to be more.
It, it may well be, but I think you can, you have to have a notion. And if it's.
Yeah.
But I think before we do this, I, I really want a little bit more information. It just seems like it's.
Yeah, again, we can, we can keep pushing it down the road.
No, I'm just saying about the duties that we asked you last month to do, that, that's, I want, I.
I would say specifically the supervisor's job should be to do the statutory duties that cannot be given to the manager, which is to chair the board meetings, to be the chief legal officer and the chief assessing officer.
I understand that. I understand that. But you do more than that. That's what I want to see. You do more than that now. That's what I want to see what the manager is going to be.
Well, don't you do all these other things for the, that the superintendent was going to do? Is that what you do?
Yeah.
It's all here, right?
Yeah. It's, it is, it is a, I mean, when I look through the other townships, there's, it is the duties of the day-to-day operations all fall to the manager.
Plus the economic development stuff and some of those other things that you work on. The manager would work on those.
But you would still be doing all the, you as a supervisor would go, be attending the meetings, like the metro meetings and all those other meetings, not our manager.
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's one of the questions I get.
So I think that the board needs to make a motion and, and it can be in the form of an ordinance to create a manager's position. We have not voted yes or no for going in that direction. And once we've made that decision that we agree that we should have a manager, that's one thing. Now, after we get that kind of spelled out and we're firm on that, then we decide what we want to do about a supervisor. I don't know that it needs to be part of the same.
Right.
Thing. I mean, you know, we can.
Yeah, I think we do need some clarity on the supervisor position, if we save by April. So.
Yeah, what you're saying is we're doing the manager position right now, and then once that's set and done, then we decide on the supervisor.
Once we've voted on it, we can do it at the same meeting if you want. But you, you.
One step at a time.
Generally, generally here, people are kind of agreeing and on all the work that's Chris done on it, it's not a full-time position. It's a half, half-time or third time or, you know, whatever it is. And, and that's what it is with all other townships. I don't know why we would need to have anything more than that. You know, so.
But I still would like to see them separate, not in one motion. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
I want, I want to see it separate.
Yeah, and I think that's what Molly's saying, too, is we can create, we can create the manager's position and then decide on how we structure the supervisor's position.
Right, that's exactly. I just don't want to see it in the same ordinance.
But, but don't they go hand in hand?
They're pretty much going in hand, yeah. I mean, the ordinance is going to reflect who's, who's.
But this is a, this is a position that we're hiring and the other one's elected. That's why I want to see it separate.
Well, we can do two votes at, at the same meeting even. I don't.
Yeah, again, I'll, I'll go out and look at some of the existing ordinances and see how they.
How do they do them and what's in there? Yeah. But so at the next meeting, and maybe we need a little timeline here.
I got a three-week break.
Everybody is figuring, no, you can't leave town.
At the next meeting? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, you got work.
No vacation, no.
I got three weeks, I got three weeks to, and we could probably get that personnel committee together to.
I will not be available for the personnel committee until after the 27th of.
Probably, we might want to wait a couple of weeks.
So you're kicking the can down the road, are you?
Okay, I have got early voting going. I have worked.
What are you saying about the getting the personnel committee before Laney said something?
Do you just sit down and review the information we find on the ordinances that exist?
Oh, to bring it back to the board?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I know you didn't get a chance to finish this, that's what I wanted to ask. What, what, what were you trying to say?
Well, we wouldn't want to do that before the 27th.
No, no, no. You're getting in trouble.
Well, we do, we just need to make a formal decision and vote on it as a board because this is a big deal. You know, we're changing the structure of the township, and so we get, get that done. And then right following that, we start getting, figure out the manager or the supervisor's part of it, how, how that's going to break down.
So the, the good news is, everybody I've talked to, I've asked them the question, has, do you know anyone who's ever rescinded a decision to go with a manager? And they all said no. Mr. Barshew.
Did you talk about the process they undertook to get to that point? Did you ask them that? Did you ask them that?
Yep, and I think, um, there's the the guy from Ada, the one you dropped off your list, was was very, very forthcoming with, you know, he was the second manager they had, I think, but his, um, he said the first manager did a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of, you know, redefining the positions and getting everything where it worked, but.
Did he talk about the board experience and how, you know, how it played out? Did they do a consultant to, you know, a year in advance to see what it looked like? Did they decide it amongst themselves and do their own research like we are? I'm just curious to see what others might have said.
Yeah. No, I don't think we had that conversation.
Okay.
When's the next meeting? I'm just looking.
It'd be in March.
No kidding?
12.
12.
I think I have my marching orders, and we will move on to new business. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Amy.
Bye. Uh, consideration of a bid from Elmer's for the Stone Ridge PRV project. So this is, uh, not wonderful, but it's not a whole lot. How would you describe this again, Jennifer?
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
That's it.
I hate that statement, but sometimes it applies.
No, I I think the letter's pretty straightforward. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have. I tried to provide some background. This is definitely a priority from the DPW's perspective. The infrastructure is beyond its life expectancy. The PRV, as originally designed, for whatever reason, predates any of my involvement, did not have a bypass. So when we experience a failure there, there, uh, we have to throttle some valves. Um, you can imagine getting into a buried vessel below ground with access to about 150 pounds of water pressure. So, um, I would not do it. So it's one of those things that I don't ever want to put anybody in a position I wouldn't want to do either. So there's no bypass, meaning if we have to take it out of service, a safer method to reduce pressures to work on it. So we're abandoning this in place, putting in a PRV, our new standards, which you'll see in our specs when they eventually come around, are in, they're prefabbed encapsulated steel vessels. The old ones that were in the press they're replacing are all concrete, so they're susceptible to water infiltration flooding. So we've definitely implemented new technology. So the DPW is ecstatic to see this project move ahead. Bidding it out a couple of years ago was about $720,000. The price has gone up about $11,000, which.
That's not bad.
Is, no. Um, in comparison to my original cost estimate, yes, but that original cost estimate was generated in 2019, so we don't even talk about that. But the DPW thanks you and for considering this. I appreciate it.
We are looking for a motion.
I would like a motion that we do the recommendation for Stone Ridge PRV to Elmer's Crane and Dozer Incorporated for $731,680. Bless you.
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, I have a question.
Was that a, was that support?
That was a sneeze. Or a held-back sneeze.
Okay. Is there a second?
I think she had a.
Well, do you second, then I ask a question, sorry?
I'll second if nobody has seconded.
We have a second? Are we have any questions or comments?
Thank you. I was just wondering, since we decided to use our ARPA money on this project, does that need to be in the resolution, that we're going to write it out of our ARPA fund, or does that not matter?
Um.
We were going to do, I think, 522, a water sewer project. So I just don't know if that needs to be in the motion to actually come out of that.
Resend my motion or redo it?
Um, I think that would be.
You don't think what the auditors would say? I don't know.
That's that's not a bad idea. Do you remember the exact amount?
Is it 550 or 520 we're putting towards?
It was around 500.
It was a little bit above that.
You don't have to put a number in, you could just say you're going to.
And then then this is going to be from our ARPA.
You could make the motion with a portion of the funding.
Portion, yeah.
The ARPA as we.
I will resend my motion. You want to resend your second?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that we give Elmer's Crane and Dozer the bid for the Stone Ridge PRV in the amount of $731,680, with a portion of that coming out of our ARPA funds.
Support.
All right, we have a motion in support. Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Who ended up seconding?
Molly.
Okay, Agustinelli.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Barshaf.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
Before the next one, is this going to be coming out of our funds still, in case I make a motion?
This is coming. There is some ARPA funds, but these are county ARPA funds.
Okay, not ours, so I don't have to do it in a form of a motion that way. Okay. I'll let Jennifer go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you. Um, and the next one on the docket is another project that we solicited for bids again. And last year, when we went through this exercise, Francisco's came to the board. This was spearheaded by them for a sanitary sewer extension on Silver Lake. And so the board elected to construct the extension, excuse me, utilizing your lateral charge process. So there are several homes and properties along that route. I, if I recall, about six of them that are going to be, have access to sanitary sewer with this project. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any bids. They were under a pretty tight timeline at the moment. However, so it was tabled, we rebid the project, and we did receive one responsive bidder of Molon Excavating. I was very personally pleased with the price, considering, again, this was a cost estimate generated almost two years ago, and ended up seeing it reflected about an 18% cost increase, which I, again, I was quite pleased with for a project, because it is complicated. There's a lot of utilities, there's critical infrastructure, the road commission crossing, we've got some bore and jack that we have to incorporate with this to provide sanitary sewer. But my recommendation in the board packet is to approve, we bid it out as two alternates, one completely as directional drill to avoid the utilities, the other one open cut, and the open cut came in a little bit cheaper, so I would recommend that route. Um, we did, um, this was one of the projects working with planning departments submitted to county ARPA, so they did receive $285,000 in supplemental ARPA funding. So that's very exciting for them. So again, I would recommend moving ahead. Al Molon is poised to start this project as soon as frost laws are up, so looking to have it started in March and.
So the project received $285,000?
The project itself received $285,000.
Not the store owner?
No, no, the project, meaning it, yes, the.
It applied to the entire project and then costs are divvied up from there.
The township was the applicant for county ARPA, so you'll receive those funds to disperse accordingly for this project. Did I miss?
So the cost to us is $420,000.
Less $285,000.
Okay, so we'll get the money back, but right now, we have to put out the 480, $20,000.
420, yeah.
Or 427, if we go with the, oh, no, we're going to go with the.
Well, with the open cut, yeah.
Okay.
So I believe county ARPA is reimbursement-based, so I've been submitting those requests on your behalf.
Okay.
So once you pay the contractor, you'll get reimbursed back with invoices, and that'll go back to your sewer fund. But ultimately, we're going to go through a lateral charge, so the remaining costs will be distributed based on frontage to the respective property owners that have access to sanitary sewer.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, yeah, so that was kind of my question on the same note. So just to clarify, only the balance is going to be charged to the residents in their lateral fees?
Yeah.
Okay, so they do receive, it's not just the township receiving this money, but the residents are actually getting a discount.
Right, because it was meant for this project.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so I'll work with Amy, your assessor, on computing what those lateral charges ultimately would be, but I would anticipate, you know, it would make sense to back it out of the construction costs so that, yeah, because it was intended for this project. Yeah, okay. Would you agree, Chuck?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Maybe a dumb question, but I'm just curious. So the $427,000 bid is a direct drilling, you said?
Correct.
Is the $7,000 worth, um, the convenience that direct drilling would create versus tearing up the ground?
Tearing up the road.
Yeah, like tearing up the whole area, you know, and how it impacts people's driving through there, what else the road commission has going on, how long it's going to drag the project out. Because to me, $7,000 doesn't seem like much.
It is.
If it's really going to create major inconvenience to that area.
Um, I I confirmed with Molon, it's going to, it's not going to have any impact on timeline. Uh, no, but it's a great question. Um, the crossings for the road commission, those are by default directionally drilled because typically, road commissions don't let us open cut road crossings. So that's built into the open cut cost. So really, the only impact is going to be related to restoration.
Shoulder of the road.
Right, restoration, but it's all within public right-of-way. It's not private property and, you know, and that's a bid item, so if they don't restore it properly, they don't get paid until it's properly restored. So it it's a temporary eyesore.
And I think with the way the road there is three lanes, obviously, they can shut off the 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 route into town and do their work and let people come into the oncoming lane. Okay.
So it's not going to be any disruption except for restoration, I would anticipate.
Okay.
That's within the shoulders, so.
Perfect, thanks.
Good question.
I make a motion that we accept Molon Excavating bid of 400, for the base, for $420,000 for the Silver Lake sewer extension.
Support.
We have a motion in support to accept the base bid on the Silver Lake sewer extension. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Was that Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Back to public comments.
Jennifer, you want to make point five?
Item 10 is other business. Any other business to come before the board? Yes, now.
I have other business. Um, you guys asked me last time to bring the, um, what what was going on at the conference for MTA. So here are all the classes, what all is going to be in. I I did hear back from Steve, he's interested in the full conference, and so is Denise, if anybody else is interested, just let me know.
What's the end date for?
Early registration.
Just count, yeah.
It's in here, I know. Um, speaking of Steve, I want everybody to know, on Saturday, when early voting started in that snowstorm, Steve was our first voter.
Okay.
Um, let's see.
As he headed for Scottsdale.
By March 25th, so I have a little bit of time, but we'll keep track of it.
But you got mine down, right?
I have yours down, I have Steve's down. We'll go from there.
I'll let you know.
You'll let me know? Molly will let me know? Chloe?
It's so good.
I went to last year, but I'm going to be in Oregon mid-April for a couple of days, so.
Oh, it's so good, though.
I just have to see what they have.
So early voting, this is, are we at our fourth day-to-day, and we hit 100 voters. It started out slow, 15 on Saturday, 11 on Sunday, like 26 yesterday, and 42 or 43 today. So we're getting there. I mean, it's something, yeah.
Only eight more days to go.
I don't even want to talk about it. I have nine days straight so far, well, seven more to go. But Chuck and I were voting, or Chuck and I were the only people that here working on Presidents' Day.
You should figure out how much it costs for each voter.
Well, you don't, you don't really want to know.
You have 200 total that have voted in all this work, right?
It it looks like, you know, statewide, it's going to be, after early voting is over, if we go in this direction we're going statewide, it would be less than 1% voted.
Yeah, maybe it'll catch on.
I think that's what the argument would be, is that just through awareness, you know, it's new, first year.
Tough.
Nice work.
It's a lot.
Good work, Laney.
Oh, thank you.
Any other additional business to go to the cause? Are there any objections to being adjourned?
No, sir.